Allocating that's, that also is also been. I don't know where Mr. Morales is. That account has been opened.
Because that's coming this week and we need to plan it out for that too. From what I understand here already, from my conversation today, and my phone call, legal already has the contract for next week.
We'll confirm.
We're already in discussions with the planning department to figure out how much we should, we can put from that budget into these project budgets so we can cover that in voices.
So the motion is to.
Move forward with awarding and negotiating. Is there a motion to award and negotiate? Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Go ahead and proceed to the next. Do we have anything else? The spending from middle Rio? No? Mr. Reese? Did you have? Uh, item number twenty-five. Discussion and appropriate, your, your excuse, Mr. Yes. Discussion and appropriate action to designate Isaac T. Reese, Maverick County Grant Administrator, as a civil rights officer for Texas CDBG Agreement S, I'm sorry, um, CFC zero-one-zero-zero. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item is so opened.
Uh, Judge, on this one, uh, it needs to be CFC twenty-four dash zero-one-zero-zero. And for the next one as well.
Dash zero, one, zero, zero?
CFC twenty-four dash zero-one, zero, zero.
Is there a motion to amend? Motion to amend has been made by Commissioner Ramos, second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. There is an abstention, uh, for, uh, being Commissioner, uh, Reese. Uh, item has been, um, amended. Okay, go ahead and now take the item up with the corrected, um, item number, which would be CFC two-four dash zero-one, zero, zero. There is a motion to proceed with by Commissioner Ramos. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item has been, uh, has passed. Uh, four in favor, one abstention being Commissioner Reese. Moving forward to item number twenty-six. Discussion and appropriate action to approve a resolution reaffirming the following policies. Citizen participation plan and grievance procedures, excessive force policy, fair housing policy, section five oh four policy, grievance procedures, code of conduct policy, including affirming commitment to the Violence Against Women's Act. Section three, economic opportunities, limited English proficiency, and an activity to affirmably, affirmatively further fair housing choices for Texas CDBG agreement. Number, uh, CFC dash two-four dash zero-one, zero, zero.
CFC twenty-four.
Twenty-four, correct. Uh, is there a motion to amend first that item to read that way? Motion has been made, uh, to amend the item to read with a correct number. There is a second, uh, item. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. There is an abstention, uh, by Commissioner, uh, Reese, and four in favor. Uh, item has been so amended, is there a motion to open the item now? Motion has been, uh, made to open the item by Commissioner Ramos. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Uh, let the record reflect that there are four, uh, in favor, and one abstention being Commissioner, uh, Reese. Mr. Reese?
Uh, Judge, Commissioners, good afternoon again. Uh, apologize for that typo. Um, this is a normal procedure that we are required to do with, uh, CDBG projects. Um, it's not anything that's out of the ordinary. There needs to be these, uh, uh, affirmations of civil rights, uh, documents. Uh, we already have them adopted as a county, so we just have to reaffirm them. Uh, there's also some subsequent section-three presentations that need to be done as required by CDBG projects. But this one, it does need to be done for every, every CDBG project that we're awarded.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion has been made by Commissioner Rios. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Let the record reflect, therefore in favor, with one abstention being Commissioner Reese. Moving forward to item number twenty-seven. Discussion and appropriate action to approve the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure Chapter fifty-nine audit report. Required to be prepared and filed on or before November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, by Maverick County Audit.
Uh, good afternoon, Judge. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, my understanding.
Let me just real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there a motion to open the item? Yes, motion has been made by Commissioner Morales, second by Commissioner, um, Rios. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
I'm sorry about that. Um, my understanding is the report has already been submitted to the auditor's office.
Ms. Parrentes?
Uh, we're going to need to see inside your office, but there is an issue with the wording on the item.
Okay.
And, um, as I was, I was told, the wording should read, "Discussion and appropriate action to request the auditor to conduct an audit required by Article fifty-nine point oh six of the Code of Criminal Procedure." That, that should be the wording. So there with that, we'll review it, check it, and certify. So it's just on the wording.
I'm in your motion to reflect her.
To reflect the actual line. Could you read that once again, just into the, into the record, please?
Discussion and appropriate action to request the auditor to conduct an audit required by Article fifty-nine point oh six of the Code of Criminal Procedure.
Very well. Motion, motion has been amended by Commissioner Morales. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Commissioner Ramos? Yes? Uh, item has passed unanimously. Item is so amended, uh, and therefore, at this time, we'll go ahead and take the action on the item, uh, in order for us to go ahead and proceed. This will now, uh, request, of course, that you conduct that audit.
Yes.
Okay. And how long does that audit normally take?
It's just a couple of pages, so it will start on here right away.
Is there anything else that's being requested of the court at this time? Is there a motion to approve? Motion has been made by Commissioner Reese. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion? And just so that everybody knows, Commissioner Rios has lost her voice, but I can hear her, okay? Um, but we can go ahead and proceed. If there is no further discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Uh, item number twenty. Yes, your excuse. Thank you so much. Uh, item number twenty-eight. Discussion and appropriate action to approve the Crowe Agreements for Forensic and Cyber Security Services. Auditors? Um, y'all are handling this item. Is there a motion to open the item? Motion has been made by Commissioner Morales. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Reese. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so.
Yes, uh, basically, this is an agreement with Crowe. Uh, they, it's a company that analyze the compromise accounts and then informs us, informs us of the steps to take. This is basically the same company that assisted us with the first incident. And so since these were an emergency, every, the work was done, but now we have to follow up with the agreements. And I believe they were sent to Mr. Grove.
Right. Based on this and based on, of course, the, um, cybersecurity, uh, needs that the county has to uphold, uh, is there a motion to approve and to proceed? Motion has been made by Commissioner, uh, Rios, second by Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Parrentes. Item number twenty-nine. Discussion and appropriate action on status from auditors on request for proposals for the following projects at the existing Elm Creek Park. One landscaping master plan, two finalized entrance culvert, three run water lines for sprinkler system, four install recommended ADA sidewalks, five add fence to sand volley, volleyball, six add fence to pickleball court, seven add shade structures to existing picnic tables, eight start landscaping, nine implement light throughout park. Commissioner, uh, is there a motion to open the item? Motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, second by Commissioner Reese. Discussion? Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so. Commissioner?
I'm using status from the auditor's department on their request for proposal for this project.
Okay, this is the Elm Creek project. We did meet, uh, mid-September regarding this project. So again, we needed the scope of work. Um, we did mention that we may need to hire an engineer to do, everything was supposed to be considered one project because it's one park. Right now, what we're recommending is that once we have the on-call engineers, we select an engineer and have him subcontract to get all this work done. From scope, scope of work and all type of needs. Because this is going to be, it's, um, architect on board to do the design specs and procurement. Um, if there's no architect, no architect was procure, so no specs on the project were obtained. So right now, we don't have detailed specs on this project. We will need somebody that knows and can look at all that. So another option would be to get one of the on-call engineers to run the project, subcontract the architect to prepare the specs, designs, renderings for this project. This would be the best option to move forward rapidly. On October twenty-fourth, twenty-first, on-call engineers were approved and we're currently working with legal to prepare contracts for the next regular meeting in November. Once the contracts are signed and approved, we may select the engineer and have them move forward with the project as stated on item number two. Commissioner Ramos, once you select the engineer, we can assist with the coordination of this project. And then just make sure we set up a meeting so we can proceed accordingly. On a lot of these projects, we are, I mean, there's, there's issues on moving forward rapidly because of the need. I mean, we're not engineers, we're not architects. So we can't do all that work, and a lot of that work needs to be prepared properly on professional services. So what we, what my office started doing, especially on the bigger projects, we're meeting, like right now, we meet with Commissioner Reese on the substation. So that, and every week we're meeting, so we know where we're at with this project. Because I don't want my department to be the bottleneck of any project. So with this project too, once the engineer is selected, we can meet with Ms. Ramos or whomever she'd like us to meet and guide them on the next steps to take so that we can move forward without any bottlenecks or any issues with the projects. And we will make time to meet with each and everyone that we need to, to get projects going. I don't mind having weekly meetings and then eventually bi-weekly meetings until we complete these projects. We want to make sure that everybody has the correct information, that things are done properly, and that they have proper procurement, and that the funding is there before we start getting the invoices, wherever it needs to be allocated. So we're open to that, um, making time on my schedule to have these meetings. And right now, the best option to follow is that once we have these engineers, they could subcontract the architects to get all the specs. Because this is, um, a pretty intricate project. I know it's going to require lighting, plumbing, parking, um, ADAs. And then we already have an agreement with Tech dot for that, and it requires a culvert too, which I believe things like that would have to go through Tech dot specifications. So there's a lot of things that need to be addressed that they need to be done by professionals.
Motion?
Two years ago, or three years ago, I started working on this project. I got a professional engineer designed for the scope of the work for the project. And I have a copy of it. I'm sure you have a copy of that too, because I have to send it to your office. I have, I have copies of the POs of the engineers that have been hired for the scope of the work, for the sidewalk, for the surveys, for the, the bridge half engineer, for MPR engineer for the past two, three years. I've been trying to get this project off the ground for the past two, three years. I just keep getting, keep getting rejection notices from the auditors. I got a professional to give me the, to do a design for the landscaping, for the irrigation, and they, they rejected it. And, uh, I just, I brought this to the court. I have all the dates here where I have brought this project before the court to get approval to move forward for the past year. Um, they keep telling me, you need an engineer. We get the engineers, they do the scope of the work. Oh, the last meeting that we had, they said, no, we need an architect to do the scope of the work. And I said, I don't have an architect, but if you guys have an architect, let's hire the architect. Two and a, two months went by, we met at my office, and I have the email confirmation here. It was in August that we met. For, so that we can get, and I agreed. I said, okay, you want an architect, let's hire an architect. I give up. I don't know what else you want. Two months went by, and we still don't have an architect. We're still here, trying to figure out what we're going to do. And, um, I just don't want another six months to go by, and, and we're going to be changing what the requirement so that we can move forward with this project. I, I don't know what else to do. I have an engineer designed for the ADA complying sidewalk that we paid for, and here's the copies of the POs, that we, we paid for that. We paid for the survey, we paid for different scope of the work. I don't know what else, what to do to get, we came back in to do a, a request for proposals, what I'm trying to do now again, this was done back in May. Back in May, to advertise request for proposals so that we can get contractors to bid so that we can do the work. It didn't happen. It didn't happen. Why? I don't know. We, I don't know what else they need from me. I, I got frustrated, so I said, come to my office, tell me what you need so that we can move this project forward. And they said, we need an architect. So I said, okay, let's get an architect. If that's what you need, uh, let's get an architect. Two months went by, no, we don't have an architect. And here I am, trying to bring the item again, so I don't know how many years. I just pray to God we can move forward and we can get this project off the ground soon. Because all I get is rejection, rejection. I have a list. Uh, we have a ledger in my office, but every time that we have tried to put in a PO or to get any work done for that part, I don't know what else to do. And also I brought that item. I know back in May, Judge, you gave them a month to do the RFPs. It didn't happen.
And I think that, that in regards to, this is an, it's a very valid issue and a very valid concern. Because, Ms. Parrentes, I think that it's important for, for us as a court to express the concern that I think we're all seeing in all projects that are going on. And it's not to go after your department, but it is your department. And the buck stops with you. Okay? So, right now, what I, what I would find and that I see that we need to, to work towards in order to make sure that we can properly fix this issue, is that we've had RFPs that have been approved, that have not been, that have not been sent. Whether it be, let's just say Elm Creek, plus others, that have not gone out. That's the concern in where we are with how purchasing is, is being conducted. The lack of moving those projects or the lack of moving that process obviously puts our citizens at a disadvantage to not be able to rightfully enjoy those parks, rightfully have projects that are going on in the precincts, or any project that's going on at, you know, any of the county buildings, regardless. So I think that at this point, there comes a, a, a time when, when is enough enough? Where do we, where do we go from here? And I can see the Commissioner's frustration.
I can see it too.
I, I can, I can understand what it is that she has gone through. I can see it in other Commissioners, also through other projects that have been going on. But I do know that it needs to be resolved.
And I have been ma, I've made myself available to all the Commissioners. I've sent emails, I've made, I've sent texts and phone calls, and I've asked them. I'm in my office. You need to meet with me on whatever project, whatever frustration, whatever PO you have, let me look at it. I don't look at POs on a daily basis. I assume that when things get, get approved, they're going, if I don't hear a complaint, they're moving forward. So I've made myself available to all of you. I'm sorry?
Or rejected.
Or rejected, but they're being addressed. So, and I've told the Commissioners, if you have, or their assistants, if you have a purchase order that was rejected and you don't understand why, send me a text. I'll be happy to look at it. But if they're sent back and the Commissioners, I'm not aware of it, um, I'm thinking the work is mov, it's flowing smoothly, everybody's good. If I don't know the problem, then I can't help you. I know Commissioner Reese, um, about three weeks ago, he walked in the office and said, I've had enough. My substation project has not moved forward in a year. And I said, okay, what are the issues? Let's look at this, step by step. How do we move forward? It's moving forward. I've made the same, I mean, I've.
But I guess my, I guess like, let's say on the concern, Ms. Parrentes, that possibly is coming up on a park. When you're looking at it, and obviously, there's only a certain amount that is allocated through the CO money. Through the certificates of obligation money from two thousand twenty. Okay? That funding that is going specifically to that park for that purpose that was with CO, CO dollars, that project can only obviously do so much. There's approximately, how much is left right now? I'm trying to remember, for, for your part. Ninety-eight, hundred ninety-eight, right now that's left. I can understand an engineer. It's been done. You have an engineer on, on, because obviously, we want to make sure that everything is compliant, everything is in order, and that that's going to move forward. But where in the policy does it actually state that there has to be an architect? Or are these picking and choosing from the department on certain projects?
I mean, some of the issues there had been that they were being broken down to different things. So when it's one project, we don't piecemeal the project. It has to be one entire project.
And I, but I do believe that, like, and, and I, I can see this project because it is, it has been going on for the last three years. This park exists. Elm Creek Park has been there forever. Okay? Whether Commissioners in the past never did anything at that park, then that's their problem. Okay, right now, there's a Commissioner who wishes to move forward with wanting to do something in that park. My concern is, these are improvements that are being done to the park. And that's where my, that's where I have a bit, of a, of a very big concern with how you all are classifying the project at its, in its whole, I guess you should say.
Well, this is a park improvement worth over two hundred thousand dollars. So it has to be procured properly.
And why didn't it get procured back?
We did that.
When I brought it back in June?
Because initially, what we were given was just, I'm only going to do this. Or I'm only going to do, the scope of the work is here. This, the scope of the work is right here. Every, it's the same.
Which is technically, everything's on the agenda.
Everything is here back in June. Nobody told me in June, you need an architect.
So we're just going to get a contractor?
No, no, nobody told me. If somebody would have told me when we brought it to the court for approval, you should have told me when we met two months ago, oh, we're not doing this anymore. Now it's, you need an architect. Two months went by, and we don't have an architect.
And I didn't.
If I didn't wait five more months?
I can't help you if I don't know your issue. Now I know your issue.
I have all the emails here in, going to your office in regards to this matter. I have all the emails. I have, I'm even doing the Army Corps of Engineers, the permitting that we need, the Tech dot, we're doing that in-house to, to move, speed it up. And we're not, I don't know what else to do to help you move forward with what you need to do so that we can procure and get the work that our constituents deserve. And it, it's just very frustrating, very frustrating. I have all the emails here going to your office, and I will be, here's the agenda item. This one was back February of last year that we got approval to go out for RFPs.
And I understand, I'm here now, it's my office now, but I was there February of last year. Like I said, if you don't speak with me, and I do get texts from you, and I addressed your issues when you text me. Communication is crucial. I'm not blaming anybody. I'm here now, the buck stops with me.
That's what we met in August, and, and your office said, let's go out for, you need to get an architect. I already have a professional that gave us, um, I put in a quote for a professional, um, landscaper to do the master plan for the landscaping, and it was rejected.
And we.
So we, you asked for an architect.
We go back to the same thing. These are broken down.
And I'm still waiting, and I'm still waiting.
So, but I'm, but, but let's, let's go back to the RFP that was authorized by the court for you to move on with. It wasn't done. Was it done?
It wasn't done.
Stand up. I'm sorry?
Judge, can you get Commissioners?
Yes. That, uh, uh, RFP that Commissioner asked was not approved by her. There were some details that she didn't agree to, so we, yes, permissions. So that's why we had to come back. I told you that we had to get an engineer on board. You said no, then we didn't need to. So.
We, we already have all the engineers that we've already hired. Why do we need to bring them in?
We presented that RFP that you had in your hands, the ones that was produced, but you didn't agree to it on terms. That's what, now you're agreement with it?
We did that, the, it was already included in there. The scope of the work was already included in the RFP.
Yes.
You, you included detail.
Yeah, we included everything in there, and we, we met in your office, we went detail by detail.
We met in my office two months ago. After the RFP, we never met.
Yes, we did.
Not in my office, we didn't meet. No, sir, we didn't.
So, when we help do these projects, we send the information back. Do you agree with this? Are you okay with this before we present it for, for bid? If we don't get responses, then we move on to our next project.
They didn't submit anything. They did not submit the scope of the work for anything. All we discussed was, I submitted a list of the projects that we wanted to do.
When did you get that?
And that was it.
When did you get that RFP on your hands?
In June.
And we met, discussed it, that's why.
You, you just emailed it to me. That was it.
We met, discussed it.
In August.
But are you in agreement with it? We can publish that RFP out.
Can we do that tomorrow? Please?
We cannot do it tomorrow. We can do hopefully for Sunday.
That's all I'm asking. We need to move.
Are you in agreement with that RFP?
I am in agreement with that, that one. I've been in agreement with it. And if you need a copy of the scope of the work, I've got it here.
For what?
For the scope, it's the same thing that's on the RFP.
We'll publish the RFP, yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Commissioner that we meet, um, yourself and myself along with the auditors to make that final revision and review on this, uh, possibly tomorrow, to get this going and move, move forward. But I do want to see what these issues are because it continues to be the same thing. If there would have been even a, a sense that there was a disagreement or something, that's still the responsibility of the department to move these, these projects forward timely. This is all that is, and that's my concern.
We agree on that.
Okay?
However.
And if not, it better be a paper trail.
Yes.
And emails that are going to turn around and say, you haven't responded, you haven't responded, you haven't responded. That's, that is the issue that we need to, that's the issue of, of, of making sure that we can move forward.
Yeah, we've been improving that with Ms. Gaudio on board, you know, constant communication via email. via email trails, letting the department can tell, yeah, that, Commissioner Reese continued that. However, you mentioned some other RFPs that were approved on Commissioner's court that have not gone out. And those have not gone out because we have asked for the services from the departments that are requesting those RFPs, and we have not got any answers. So, we're here to help, yes, but yet, we also need the help from the department. Whenever we go out for, uh, out for proposals, qualifications, we contact the departments, we go to the departments, what is the scope, what you need, here's a draft, review it. So we get an engineer, okay? Send it to the engineer, send it to whoever needs to be, get input into it, so we can get a good document out for the contractor. But yet, I mean, we're still missing that communication or cooperation from the departments when they request an RFP. And that's what also is some of the things that we need to do.
My recommendation, Commissioner, is that there be a motion that's going to be set forth that yourself, myself, along with Ms. Barrientos and Ms. Rodriguez will meet tomorrow to finalize this issue and to make sure that it's published accordingly.
Of course.
Okay? That, that motion has been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion, being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number thirty, discussion and appropriate action in regards to the TechSots 2025 Maintenance and Traffic Safety Conference, November seventeenth through the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five registration fee. This motion to open by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion, being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Uh, item is so opened. Commissioner?
Yes, on our end, we just need authorization. We're attending the TechSots conference in San Antonio, and they don't accept the checks. We normally, when we go to conferences. So we need, it needs to be charged to the card.
Okay. Is there an, um, a motion to go ahead and, and to authorize the, the card, uh, purchase? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rios. Discussion? Yes.
What, uh, what card do we use for?
Yeah, which card, because yours is for emergencies. Mine was approved for subscriptions and dues for two ninety-third, and then our Zoom for IT, and then all other IT charges.
Or like, let's say, for.
Or training.
But it's just to pay.
Registration. To pay subscriptions and dues, and IT charges.
Mr. Rose?
Y'all not have, so y'all don't have a standard travel card policy, anything to authorize this?
No, we're trying to get to that level.
The issue here is also that.
We've, we've had pushback for some time.
That, like, for example, the judge's credit card, it's under Maverick County, it has his personal social security number on it. The one that's assigned for my office for subscriptions and dues and IT needs has my personal information on it. So they were approved for a specific purpose.
Y'all need to get a P-card policy in place.
Well, I know that with the new system, that we're obviously going through the transition already of the finance system, the P-card is what we're looking at right now.
And we don't object to them paying, and we reimburse them, but you don't have an issue with them.
Yeah, but it's not.
And it just say here, that's reimbursement. For mine, they wanted, they're liable to get the reimbursement. So that's why I didn't want to do that.
You know, this will be something to look at revising, once they have a system in place, to track these kinds of things. But the way that we used to do it is, if you had to go, you would go check out the card from the auditor's office, pay your dues, you'd get your PO for a specific amount, you'd write it down, use the credit card, then check it back in the auditor's office.
And I believe in the past, that's what they had, that it became an issue that people would forget to bring purchase orders or receipts, and then we had all these charges charged to those cards, so they canceled all.
Did you see the card? Well, that was, might have been back then, but the way it is, is the City of Eagle passes it, finance director opens the card to purchase.
Right.
It's a PO still going through that process. P-card system.
We don't have.
Which is what we are trying to get. So, I mean, in this issue, or.
You can't do it, you can't pay check on this one, it has to be card. It can be electronic check.
We already tried, Jessica, my assistant, already tried different ways, and, and what if we mailed the check, and they said, no, it's gotta be through credit card. So that's why I put the item in, and it'll be Mr. Reese, you're attending, correct, Mr. Reese? And myself. I don't want to be going tonight.
So, who, what cards are other currently?
Third.
What cards?
The card we asked for, cards issued from the bank, one to the judge, and one to.
For what purpose?
The judge's is for emergency purposes. The auditor's is for subscriptions, for IT purposes. We use it mostly for two ninety-third to cover their Ring Central service, and we use this, we use it for our storage in IT, because our IT person was staying with his own personal credit card, eight hundred dollars a month, and then we would reimburse them for years. So we saw that, that's what about this credit card to cover those.
Due's and subscriptions.
Due's and subscriptions, um, I think they have to do with the Zoom expense.
But that's what it is. I mean, it's dues and subscrib-
Yeah, dues and subscriptions.
So, I mean, would registration not fall under dues?
With TechSots.
It is training. You couldn't authorize, you couldn't authorize an exemption?
Under emergency.
Or for travel, you couldn't authorize the card to be used to purchase, to pay for this now?
Um, I believe when they approved those, in the minutes they specified what it could be used, so.
So this would be an authorized, it would be an amendment to that policy, a one-time amendment to cover.
I believe that the minutes on those are that those, when those items were approved, because I know the card that was said, and technically, I, the card, I don't believe that it's for the emergency purposes, if it's specifically under mine. Because that one was under Raoul Trevino.
That's the auditor's.
Because that's what the court, I didn't want the card, because I wanted it to go strictly under the, under the auditing department.
I think we do have the card out, maybe.
Is.
Maybe that's one that we use during the card somehow.
So. By order of the court, you could authorize exemption, a one-time exemption to that policy to allow the purchase to be made from that other card, if it's under her name. And then you'll have to transfer the funds, whatever travel expenditures, to pay for that. That's what I would recommend doing. It's, it's a one-time exemption from that policy to authorize this purchase. You need to get P-cards.
But it's the on going through?
One time.
One time. And, and the other, everything else has been already approved?
And if we need to look at, and if we need to look at that, Ms. Barrientos, you know, until we go to the card system, I would just recommend that maybe we consider having another card available, because, let's say, Amazon purchases, Quill purchases, everything else, those aren't specifically through the PO check system.
Yes, yes.
They are? Okay. Because I know that there were some that were being purchased by card.
Amazon, Quill, Ahi, it's a PO, and we got a check. And we pay electronically online, but it's, it's a check. So I, I don't object to another card, I just don't want my social security number on it. And the bank will authorize a card without a personal social security number on it.
Mr. Valdez, can we look at that and ask that question, and see if there can be a card issued to Maverick County, you know, for that purpose? Well, you're the treasurer, it can be made to you.
So.
Well, my motion is to make do a one-time exception for the transaction.
To authorize this purchase.
To authorize the registration fees. Only the registration fee for the TechSots conference.
Okay, now, I'll need that information, because once you approve it, it's going to automatically go to pay. Or how much?
Jessica has all the information. She's been working very closely.
Just make sure I get it.
Tomorrow with Annabelle and.
Ed Tuce.
Her motion.
A minute.
Mine was rejected.
So you have.
I have.
But I want to make sure I have all the information, because I'm going to sit and wait for it, and then it doesn't happen.
Tomorrow morning, I'm in, I'll personally deliver it to your office, so that we can basically, this other item. Well, at late morning, because I'm judging. In the morning.
All right. So there's the motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner, Commissioner Reese's discussion?
This is for.
And it's an amended motion, and an amended second.
Say again, I'm sorry.
Three payments or just first?
No.
How many payments? So authorized for the, to cover the registration fees for all that's in there.
Further clarification?
Is it?
Can we make sure it's in the minutes? Motion has been so modified by Commissioner Ramos, so modified by Commissioner Reese's discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number thirty-one, discussion and appropriate action to purchase cluster mailbox units, CBUs, for predominantly public purpose. Commissioner Rios?
As I had referenced to this issue, I know you had spoken to me.
So, for this purpose, we had a very similar situation with the CBU matters that also happened in precinct one, this being also the same issue in precinct two, for that pur- for that purpose. And I think y'all needed to provide a letter to the auditors.
It's there.
I'm sorry? Oh, is there a motion to open the item? I'm sorry. Motion's been made by Commissioner Morales, second by Commissioner Ramos's discussion, being that there is none, all those in favor? Item so open.
Y'all a chance to see the letter that's provided? Okay. So it's just need to, you need to find that there's a predominantly public purpose, authorize this, and it has to be a public purpose.
Judge, I find, I find that the predominant purpose is to give a record notice of official government correspondence, more legislation, parts of action notice, medical related mail, including doctor's notices, personal medications, general correspondence.
Is that your motion? Motion's been made by Commissioner Morales, second by Commissioner Rios's discussion, being that there has been a predominantly public purpose found. We'll go ahead and proceed and call him for the question. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number thirty-two, discussion and appropriate action regarding drainage water issue on lot twenty-two to La Vista subdivision unit one. Is there a motion to open? Yes.
I would like to, I have one of someone, this is legal.
Okay.
On page seven, as well.
Take it to executive?
Executive. Item will be taken into executive session. Moving forward into item number thirty-three, discussion and appropriate action of consideration of budget, approval of a budget amendment, adjustment, amendment to fund district courts' budget cuts. Uh, is there a motion to open the item? Motion's been made by Commissioner Morales, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ramos's discussion, being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Commissioner, I do have some legal questions on this item. Is it, would it be fair to take the item into executive session? Okay. We can, very well. If we can go ahead and proceed and move back into just one item that we have pending, which is the item number twenty-three, discussion and appropriate action to approve the amendments of the Maverick County purchasing policy. In regards to this item, Mr. Rose, I'm going to go ahead and call on you, but first I'll open the item. Is there a motion? Motion's been made by Commissioner Morales, second by Commissioner Ramos's discussion. Being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Item is so open. Mr. Rose?
So y'all had asked me to present some revisions to the purchasing policy that y'all currently operate. Specifically, it was to address the law, the recent change in law that does not require competitive bidding. Um, it, the threshold went from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. Over the course of the past several months, we've had many discussions on issues that have come up with purchasing, and the requirement for quotes of, of certain amounts. So those aren't required under the statute. That's the way y'all's per, y'all's previous purchasing policy, or your current purchasing policy is, where you'd have different staggered amounts, where you have to receive several different quotes. Competitive bidding is always encouraged, and you should, you should seek to actively competitively, competitively bid out any purchases that the county makes. That way you are accomplishing the best, the lowest price and best possible value for the county. Based on the feedback, working with y'all, what I did was remove, I added some stuff to the statement of purchasing policy. A lot of this language comes from Fort Bend County's purchasing policy, which I worked with them extensively in developing their purchasing contract system. So a lot of that comes from here. We did remove several items, working with the auditor's office, that are specific to a purchasing agent. Y'all currently have a purchasing agent, so your auditor's office is the default purchasing agent. So I did remove some of those, some of those items, because they weren't applicable here. Uh, you know, we've talked in the past, I would, I would recommend future courts looking into establishing the office of a purchasing agent. That way, it takes the load off of the auditor's office, and you have somebody, a specific person in office responsible for performing these purchasing duties. It will help balance the load, the workload for everybody. But also, that purchasing agent is, it's kind of independent, they're like the auditor, they're independent, they answer to the board of judges. They're appointed by a board of judges, but they are responsible, and they do actually have quite a bit of authority in the purchasing act to help move supplies, assets around for the county towards the end of the year. By law, they're authorized to take supplies away from some offices that don't need it, and transfer to offices that do. So they do actually help save the county money. The auditor's office is handling all those functions now, so ideally, they're going to step in and do the same thing, which they are trying to do. I've been working with them, too. That's the whole idea about getting quotes out. So the main changes are going to be establishing upfront, it's kind of an overall executive summary of what the purchasing act is. It talks about requisitions, which, this is something we've talked specifically about many times, requisitions are required by law. Court can't authorize it unless there's, they can't authorize an exemption unless there's been a valid requisition that's been made. That is a legal requirement by the law. It has to be signed by the county judge. Now, you can delegate that responsibility to somebody else, but currently, that's the way y'all's policy is set up. So, the first couple pages, it explains, it's just the statement of the purchasing policy, the intent, but the big majority of changes are going to be, no more, you don't have to go out and get several quotes for different value items if it's not under a hundred thousand. The other big change is, all the, all the contact for purchases are going to start and end with purchasing. So you're not going to go out and seek vendors anymore. No, no county employee will be doing that any longer. It should all start and finish with the auditor's office. That is their job. Purchasing is their sole function, when they're performing the purchasing act, procedures and policies. So, I've been saying this to y'all for months, get them involved on the front end, contact them first, have them come work with you. We saw it earlier, they need to be involved in that process upfront, they need to walk y'all through what needs to be done, to make the proper purchase, the RFP, the RFQ, whatever it may be. So that's really going to be the biggest change. If y'all are uncomfortable with that, we can look at revising it, but I would really recommend doing that, because it'll take the, it'll take your workload off of a lot of other people. And that's their wheelhouse, that's what, they know where the money is, they know who's got the money, they know the requirements for certain projects, they'll still work with all the departments to make sure that everything is captured in an RFP, or you're getting the proper supplies and purchases done. So those would be the two main changes. So if there's any questions, happy to answer.
Yes, Commissioner.
I, I do have a concern, and I'm right, you talked it, on the second paragraph of the statement of purchasing, purchasing policy, that, that we do not have a purchasing agent. You all recommended, recommending that we, we get one. And I think it really will help us to move the business of the county. As it is, you know, it, I, I understand probably that purchasing agent has to report to the auditor department, but if we create one particular person, I, I think it'll work better and alleviate the workload that they have at the auditor department, and it'll expedite the business of the county, like I say. So, I don't know how quickly, Judge, we can get to a purchasing agent. I don't know if it's a possibility, so it's possible, so it can be, not necessarily independent, but it just, it'll, I, in my opinion, it'll, it'll move things faster. And then, uh, that's one of my concerns, and, and I wholeheartedly agree with you, of changing to the responsibilities on the second page, that you have that, uh, under the responsibilities in letter C, securing products that meet the requirements of the office at the lowest and best price for the county. Now, if we go to the lowest, it doesn't mean that we're going to get quality. You know, it, it makes sense if you buy something, well, it doesn't have to be at the lowest price, does it?
So the actual statute says lowest and best, and that, that statement is trying to reflect that. So I did work with them and, and the purchasing office had some concerns. What they proposed, Agent, is that the lowest price and best value, which to me, that's fine, but the statute actually, it doesn't, you're not required to select the lowest price, you're, it's lowest and best. So that's what the actual statute says. So lowest price, you wanna try to go to the lowest price, but if it's not the best contractor or vendor, you don't wanna select them. Right? So you have discretion whether, even though somebody might come in a couple thousand dollars less, are they offering the best value for the county, the best service or good? Maybe not.
And, and you know, the fact of the matter is that the auditor department requires that a person who comes and works with the company should have all kinds of backup information, experience and, and insurance, and that's, that's important. Sometimes a person that comes and wants to work with the company has to have the minimum, and that's why it is the lowest and it's not necessarily the lowest that we want. We wanna make sure they have all the requirements before we hire somebody to do any kind of job.
Correct. You wanna make sure they meet all the state law requirements, too, that are, there are quite a bit out there, so, that's correct.
That's another point.
And I, and I know we've talked about it before, but, and I've talked about it at the auditor's office, anytime somebody's coming on county property to do any work, they need to indemnify the work they do. They need to have insurance, because we don't wanna get sued.
So when it comes down to projects that are coming forth, every vendor, now you're telling me, is gonna have to go through a contract?
It should be. It's a, it's a Texas constitutional.
So the quotes will not be sufficed on that issue? We'll, we'll have to go through a full ledge. They'll provide the quote, if it's within threshold, it's just a stat, a standard contract that we have to basically fill in, correct?
Correct. That the auditor's office purchasing will have, will work through legal with and that she will certify all those contracts. So nothing will go through.
Is there any issue with that?
It has to have legal review and she has to certify funds are available. I mean, that's a legal requirement as well.
That's, Judge, ma'am? I don't have a problem with a contract and all, but the only problem I have is all is gonna have to go, all transactions. And if we're struggling right now, unless they designate a purchasing person that's gonna be handling that, I'm in favor of that, but...
That's, it's required by law now, though, I will say that. It had, she has to certify the funds are available for the, for the obligation.
And that's your job, and that's your job, but we have a lot of POs that go through my office, airport, water plant, and everything that we do at the precinct. So...
That was one of our concerns as well, because we have two people working on purchase orders, two people. It's a lot. And we had concerns regarding all purchases, because all purchases means all purchases. Walmart, HEB, little things that you normally already do. So, yeah, we, we did discuss some of these things.
And, and it's, as it is, we're struggling because...
We're struggling as well.
Exactly, and I don't wanna put that we have smaller transactions, and if we're gonna have to give them all the other smaller transactions that go through my, we're never gonna do any work on, no call on this taking me for one little project.
I understand that.
And so, I have issues with that.
But I do believe that in, in regards to that, you are going to, it's a simple certification of funding.
Correct.
There's no other jurisdiction that the auditor's office would have on that. It's just, yes, the money's here.
And it was properly procured.
And it's a, a contract authorized by law.
Well, but you see, any, any issue, per se, any issue or any vendor that we could send to you through the PO, because it's gonna go through the PO system, has to. We're gonna send that over to you, process that, you all make sure that everything's followed the requirement. The contract is just the, the step once the vendor gets on the county property, right? So that shouldn't take you that long to sign.
It does, it shouldn't take, well, we don't sign, we have to prepare the agreement for that.
For the, for the agreement purpose, I mean, it's a standard agreement. It's just basically placing in there what it's for.
So I've seen several county, several county, all the counties do it different ways. One that I saw not too long ago was Williamson County, which, you know, north of Travis County. And what they have is a standard purchase order contract that all vendors, whenever you're, you're signing it, it has every single term you could possibly think of, and they're agreeing this is, it's a blanket purchase order that attaches to every purchase the county makes. Something like that is what...
Check it off.
They, they understand that if we're paying, we're entering to a contract with you, you, this vendor has to accept these terms. I would recommend doing something like that. That's what we've always done, is anytime...
Would that help your department?
Well, that would help, especially, it, it would help the county in general, to protect the county, so that we don't have to be paying for things that are done incorrectly or by people that don't know how to do them. So yes, it would help the county. As far as my department, well, you're adding another thing to do, but if it's gonna help the county, then so be it. But again, here is where we need to communicate and we're clearly on the scope of work. We all need to understand, this is what they're gonna do for this purpose, and we don't stray from there. It's clear to everyone, this is the scope of work. So that's what we put on that agreement. When whoever does the work comes and gives us an invoice, we look at the scope of work, you verify that they did it and it got done, we look at that, and then we approve the payment. But again, communication, clear communication would be crucial, especially in these agreements.
So for these projects, then, you want clear communication, so I guess that's gonna go directly to you.
If it needs to.
That's, that's what I'm trying to, to verify, because I don't want my clear, your clear communication versus my clear communication are two totally different things, I think. Because I can, I can send something over to one port, part of the department and then it might be a different thought of what you might think is a clear thought. So I just wanna know, who's gonna be making that call in order for us to actually move forward? Because I think that's the frustration of all the departments.
Even though his journal, he is, he is not the purchasing agent, but he's an assistant auditor doing those functions. So I'll, I'll, he has the experience. I will go ask him, is this clear? Is this quote, do all these quotes match? Are we looking at apples to apples? And the majority of times, we're not. So we send it back, people get mad and frustrated, but we're not comparing the same things in every quote. So frustration grows there. And then it's like, okay, well, now that we're clear on what's gonna be done and what's gonna be paid for, we need an agreement because it's the law, they, oh, now we have to do an agreement. How long is that gonna take? Who we're trying to, again, protect Maverick County has their money.
Correct, correct. So in that case, Ms. Barrientos, what Mr. Groves is recommending, that's not gonna be, because you see, your initial comment here was that now you are gonna have to do a whole other thing. So we do a, basic a blanket cover here on the situation, which what you mentioned with Fort Bend, I think, Judge.
Yeah, so Williamson did that, but it, it also depends on the type of service that that's being performed and provided to the county. So construction contracts will be a little different because there are certain legal requirements that have to be included in those contracts. Texas state law got updated not that long ago, so you have to include certain things in those contracts. IT contracts are another issue. Anytime I'm negotiating an IT contract, depending on what data they're storing and where they're storing it, you need to have cybersecurity incident, not just trained, but that is, it depends on who they're accessing, but because we did one for the district court. It depends on what they're accessing, because a different level of security is required. But if they're storing sensitive personal information offsite and there's a cybersecurity breach, the county could be responsible for the cost of mailing out notices to all those people whose information was leaked. But also depending on the kinda data, if it's CGIS data, which is a higher level of security it's required, so any court-related, law enforcement-related records, you want that vendor to have CGIS compliance. So it just depends on the type of service. But again, these are all contracts that we can develop standard forms for their office to use, and they'll just have a checklist. But I do recommend certain things. We talked about IT being involved. You, anytime there's data involved or anybody's touching your info, your information technology, you want IT to sign off on it. You want them involved from the beginning, so...
Just to clear, we're not attorneys and we're not contractors and we're not agents. We're accountants. So we're doing the best we can with our projects.
Okay, so Maverick...
Yes.
So this is only for projects, not all the contracts? Any purchases?
So a standard tur, yeah, so under the, any purchase that's made...
Any purchase, pencils?
Those are different, those are de minimis.
That's what I'm...
Those are de minimis purchases, no.
So any, any...
If it requires an individual, it's not a county employee to come on to county property and to...
Oh, okay, so contracts, I agree with that. I got all purchases.
But let me ask you a question, too. So whenever you're making a purchase off of Amazon or wherever else, whenever you click that box and hit submit order, you're agreeing to, to a contract terms every single time?
We order them.
Correct, but that's my point.
You just send the PO to them and they process them.
But the, the risk is so de minimis from purchasing pens, pencils or some sort of supplies, you're not worried about it. But for other things, even if it's software, depending on what you're doing with that software, there still could be risk involved. So, but you're, typically it's, oh, I agree with the license terms, you hit click and submit, that's a contract you just agreed to. So... Correct.
Oh, I got...
I just wanna clarify with counsel here. So with this, the approval of this policy, it will be on the auditor's department on approving the vendors for the purchases? Because this is, as far as I know with the requisition, they would be sending a suggestion of the vendor, however, it'll be upon the auditor's department to choose the lowest purchase price. Is that correct?
It would be the auditor's office working with the individual departments, whoever's authorized.
However, it'll be the auditor who would have the ultimate decision on the vendor.
Not necessarily.
No?
Why would it be?
Oh, it's here that the requisition, the suggested vendor will be contacted by purchasing.
The suggested vendor.
And purchasing is under the auditor's office.
So you can't take away discretion from Commissioner's Court. Commissioner's Court is the one who makes the decision on awarding contracts.
I'm not talking about contracts, I'm just talking about every vendor, right?
So the contractor's vendor's saying... So where's the confusion that you're, you're specifically looking at?
Oh, just one clarification on page number eight. One requisition, the final, I guess, right before, it says when possible, please refer to the purchase of a particular vendor, whose product has been used, and this is part of the requisition. When you submit or, the department has submitted paperwork, right? There will be a quote or a recommended vendor, right?
So it says when possible, please refer to this product and has been found to be satisfactory, suggested vendor will be contacted by purchasing. So again...
So we, the auditors will be the ones being in contact with the vendors?
Purchasing should be the one contacting vendors. Is that what you're saying? Y'all should be the ones negotiating with the vendors.
And this isn't one of the purchasing agent?
It is. That's what a purchasing agent does. A purchasing department is the one who negotiates contracts. This is how all state agencies do it, most counties that have purchasing agents do it. And this is where I think a lot of the confusion and the holdups is you've got multiple cooks in the kitchen, right, contacting different parties, you're hearing different things from different people. If you consolidate it to one person making those contacts based on the recommendations from the department officials, the elected officials, whoever, you get that input and then you, you negotiate prices.
So negotiation would be upon the auditor's department?
I would, it should be, but I would also encourage you to have the department heads or the elected officials, whoever, keep them involved.
So then the question is, how do we clear that in the policy? Because I don't wanna have that problem, okay? They agree? I mean, I agree with that.
I agree.
I just wanna make sure that that's clear in the policy. Because if you have that question, I mean, it's just gonna be an issue that's gonna come up later on, where, how do we clear it?
Judge, ma'am?
Yes.
How will we establish a purchasing department?
Through the budget. You have to, you have to do it during your budget process. You have to create that office, you have to budget for that position.
So we created, there's a section, there's a budget line item for the county purchasing department, and it's been there for quite some years.
Three years.
How many years?
Three years.
Three years.
When I came in.
But how do you go by establishing? Do you appoint?
District judges?
Is it, is it established by the district judges?
No.
Oh, no?
No.
The commissioner's court?
Commissioner's Court has to create the position. The board of judges appoints the purchasing agent once the position is created.
Well, the position's created.
Position's been created, it's not funded.
It's not. They, if they don't fund it, then it's not in existence.
So the, the people who appoint this position will be the district judges, right?
The board of judges.
The board, including...
Including the county judge.
Right.
And the county court law judge now, too.
Oh, we don't have...
But if there's, it hasn't been funded, then it's pretty much not in existence. So it's basically been abolished if you've never funded it.
Well, the line items are on the budget. They're, they're line items. I mean, if there was funding mid-year, then something could possibly happen, but that's...
You should do it at the beginning of the year.
Correct.
In the budget on October first.
But that funding's not available. The funding was available the first year, which we obviously worked towards and towards going that route. However, there was confusion as to, okay, well then, would the purchasing agent or the one who is doing the purchasing department duties take that role? How would that, you know, kind of minimize the expenses from county operations and, I mean, Ms. Barrientos just mentioned that two, three people are not enough.
I have two people.
And she may, she may not be wrong. It sounds like there's a lot of work.
The volume, because we, we're doing everything manually. Maybe once we get it with the new...
Well, the new system that's coming up, that's gonna be... So that should roll out, we're looking at...
It should be rolling out, initial phases, June, July, this summer. But it, it, it takes training and everybody and, and transferring all the numbers to the new one, so we're not gonna have an automated PO by September.
At least it's starting.
One department that you should invest in, you'll see a return on your investment in the long run on a purchasing, funding that department, because that's their whole purpose, is to save the county money by bidding things out, making purchases, making sure departments don't overspend, but being also able to transfer supplies and those kinds of things over when other departments don't actually need it. You'll see a return on your investment in the long run on a purchasing department. You really will.
And that, it'll be kind of like another auditor, because they'll have more power, more control strictly on purchasing.
But they do have a lot of authority, like I said, to transfers, office, supplies, those kinds of things, from department officials that aren't using it. It's a good investment for the county to make in the future. It really is. And it allows the auditor's office to perform the functions that are specifically for the auditor, so it'll, it'll free her time up and her employees' time up to perform all those functions, too, so...
Would you still need those employees?
Yes, yeah.
I'm just asking. I have to ask these questions, I have to know.
Definitely.
Yes, Commissioner.
I don't know how you handle the, the POs and, you know, when you work before and the signal, the process. I mean, you use...
I'm thinking ten years ago when I was at the city and that was in your department or wasn't it ten years ago? It didn't work. It basically at the city, you would get the PO with the invoice and the stuff was already in your office. So there was minimal control as far as purchase orders went. Basically, you're getting your PO, your invoice, and then I already have the stuff in my car or whatever. So you're just paying. And I know a few years later, they got better with the P cards. So each department had a, each, well, not everybody, but certain individuals in each department had a card and they were allowed to make purchases up to a certain amount. They used, they did purchases that they needed for operational purposes, so then they would send out the paperwork with the payment requisition form.
So i- i- in a way, you, you'll be eliminating the paperwork. I mean, if we had the proper software that we can do it via full district, I guess, you know, then it goes quick. But if you have a deficient department in there, I'm just saying that, you the department that's deficient, or one that is exclusive to work with, with the purchase order.
Yes, because currently we get purchase orders on a daily basis with people that walk in and we have stacks of purchase orders that come in on certain days. All those are certificates and they each have to be stamped, and then the backup has to be date stamped.
Yes.
And then they have to determine if they have a balance and if they're properly coded and if they have a proper quote.
That's the real ages.
So it's, it's, it's a great volume for one individual to...
I think really, I think it's that, you know?
When I had that position, I would come in at seven, I would leave at seven, I would take a forty-five minute lunch just to have, I would get some home, and I still didn't have enough time in the day to get everything done. So it is a great... So it is a great volume.
It was growing, the card is growing, the man.
Plus, if there's issue for the P O, then everything helps because he has to deal with that issue, that whole P O for however long it takes. And I'm having more.
So I would say just to address the, the question you had, I don't read it, that statement the same way that he's reading it. It says, when possible, please refer purchasing to a particular vendor whose product has been previous, has been used previously and has been found to be satisfactory. What that means is that, that department has previously purchased a product from a specific vendor, that department's found that product to be satisfactory, purchase, and please let purchasing know that, hey, we, we purchased from this vendor, it was satisfactory, they provided a good service or good. You can contact them, that's the way I read that.
Would you agree that it goes to have that part of it in the policy?
Where's the clarification needed? When possible, please refer purchasing to a particular vendor whose product has been used previously and has been found to be satisfactory. So.
The requisition is a suggested vendor. So, kind of negotiation would be done, has to pass price from the hunter's, so.
They're, they're referring you to a particular vendor that they've bought a product from previously that has been found to be satisfactory, so then you'd contact that specific vendor.
So who would be in negotiations with the vendors?
Purchasing.
So, our, the auditor's department?
That's purchasing.
So, we tell them we, we found it better.
But, let's, let's look at it from this way, Mr. Groves. I mean, technically, yes, purchasing is purchasing, but it's not really purchasing. I mean, they're, 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 they are, they are.
Assistant.
Assistant auditors, you know, they're, they're, they're there to assist in all of the operation of the finance. That's why I think that it gets, they, it gets so bogged down that it's gonna get even worse. So, until that department is actually created, then I do believe that every department head should have that responsibility to proceed with moving forward.
I don't disagree with you. The issue is gonna be, is still what's in the, it's in the County Purchasing Act, is that if anybody's going to be negotiating and making contracts on behalf of the county, they need to sign an affidavit stating that they've read and understood the County Purchasing Act, and they gotta submit that to your office.
Oh, and this is, and this, and this policy obviously will still come with a full-fledged training that we have to have with the auditors, and every employee needs to know.
Well, and that's currently the law now, so if people are out there negotiating and making contracts on behalf of the county, they need to be signing an affidavit saying that they've read and understood the law and submitting it to your office. Cause it is a class, there's class B and class C misdemeanors for violating the purchasing act.
And that's why this, this issue with, um, you know, informing all of the departments of the, the actions that could come and if they don't understand their responsibility with that, then they need to do it.
Well, it's every county employee's responsibility.
Maybe one force is the violation of the purchasing act?
It gets referred to the criminal, criminal forces, so it'd be the sheriff's office, constable, or just depends on where the purchase is made? Purchasing Act is one area that people in government get hit on more than anything. Cities, state agencies, counties, it's, you don't wanna take it lightly. It's, it's a minor offense, but it's still, it's official misconduct is the other issue. So. If you would like to wait and I can work with them more to revise that specifically, to make more clarifications, we can do that.
Well, I'd like for this to be ironed out right now.
Okay.
Where, where is it that we, let's do this now. We're here, we've sat here, we wanna make sure that this policy moves forward. So my question to you, Mr. Groves, is on that section, what clarification do you all need? I'm not gonna go and deal with this for another, let's have this conversation now. We're having this, this item, and let's, let's figure out where, where we need clarification from you, Ms. Barrientos.
We did remove the blanket P O's.
I can remove that, so you, you don't like blank, so we discussed blanket purchase orders, do you wanna discuss your concerns?
Uh, blanket, blanket purchase orders, I think what it stated was that you get a P O and you can go get what you, you're supposed to get what you need, but it's kinda like, well, I have this P O I can get.
No.
So we would prefer to just have a pre-approved P O since it's not what you need.
Yes.
And I see, I see the blanket P O as something similar to that, it's just a little differently worded. But let's say that you're going, you need to go buy supplies, so you get a P O to go to Lowe's or wherever, and it's, you, you get a P O for what, fifty, fifty dollars, you know, the price is more than that, so blanket P O would cover the cost of that. But if y'all wanna remove blanket P O's, I'm fine with that.
I, I think in their, in the pre, in the current or previous policy we had where you had up to fifteen percent and go to Lowe's and the price changed a little bit, you were allowed to purchase it up to a certain percentage. I was comfortable with that, except I don't like that on, um, projects or other contracted items.
Okay. I'll remove the blanket purchase orders.
Why not, cause it changes too, the price and material.
Then they have, what are they called, job? Job orders or what do they call it?
Change orders.
Change orders, yeah. So you would have to bring the change order to get pre-approved.
In the middle of the project.
You were given a quote in a specific account, I'm sorry. So there could be a change?
Why? And does it have to be approved, this change, I've never done a change order, so I don't know how.
Change, so all contracts and purchases. The way, the way contracts should be worded is that an amount not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Right, so it, it, that cost goes over, then there has to be a change order, it has to be approved, although the law will allow you to go certain people to approve a certain cost, but all your contracts and purchases say an amount not to exceed, cause that's what you're budgeting for. That's all you're gonna pay that contract. So, the overage, it'll happen, but any change order should, should be signed off on all the time.
So let's get back, clarification?
I'm still, I'm unsure what the issue is on the other one, I'm, I'm gonna be honest, I don't know where the concerns.
So Max, I'm gonna call you back up here. Repeat what you, what you, what you had, no, we're gonna take care of this now.
The suggested vendor will be contacted by purchasing.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I guess I'm confused in what, and I wanna make sure that I get y'all's concerns addressed, cause they're, they're seeing things differently than what I'm.
The first phrase on page number eight, along the requisition, is the purpose of the requisition for purchases of the needs of the requesting office. So, again, it seems like it is implied, uh, that the purchasing department would be the one venturing out for the vendors and making the negotiations.
How do we change that?
But if, if the commissioner and the judge wants to approve it as it is, that'll be a part.
No, we're making modifications to this, so. Where, what's?
The requisition.
What section, what section is this, I'm sorry?
Page eight.
Page eight, okay.
The requisition process.
Okay, so any good requisition coming from a department should capture everything that's needed for a purchase, right? So, it should be detailed enough for, for purchasing and for the department to, to tell you exactly what they're needing. So scope of work, all those things that should be included in that requisition should be included. So if you have that, then you should be able to make a, a good informed decision from the department head based on the requisition.
Right.
So.
Purchasing would use, uh, product with service and that.
It should be that way. That's what purchasing does. Because the idea is that purchasing is going to save money.
Would it be on the department who will make the contact and negotiation with the vendor, or will it be on purchasing?
Yeah, but basically, if you give us what you need, we'll, we'll get it for you from the best value.
Well, because you see, but you're, you look at, here on requisition, you have a department head or duly authorized person within the department initiates, prepares, and signs the requis- requisition. They're already doing everything. So why would purchasing tell somebody, no?
No, I don't know, like, so once the requisition is submitted and approved, it'll be upon the, uh, purchasing on venturing out for vendors and products with service. After the requisition.
With no recommendation from the department head or official.
No, it does say that there should be a recommendation that this has been purchased.
Should? There's a big difference between may and shall.
This is department head.
I, I wanna make sure we get clarified, clarify that it is up to the official of that department to make that determination.
And that's what it says. I don't see how he's reading that differently.
This is, isn't this your current policy language?
Our, our current policy says the department head.
Cause I don't remember modifying it, this is what it currently says.
And that's what it has, the department air, duly authorized person within the department initiates, prepares, and signs the requisition, which is a P O.
Can you tell me who would be making negotiations on purchasing? Will it be purchasing, or will it be a P O?
Why negotiations, that's not, it doesn't say that.
If this is approved right now, who would be making the venturing out to the vendors?
Purchasing.
It should be purchasing. That's what I'm saying, that's what I've been saying.
Okay.
So where's the confusion coming?
So you're saying it should be?
It should be purchasing, yes. Yes.
Where is it on here, I don't see it.
So I didn't modify a lot of this language in here, so this is from your previous policy, that's.
So with the approval of this policy, it will be purchasing, it will be venturing out.
That's it, in place.
So do y'all wanna change that then?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't see it, what he's saying, I don't see it on here.
Where, where are you?
I'm, what I'm saying is, what I'm recommending is, if, if they're gonna be performing the function of a purchasing office, then they should be the ones negotiating contracts and making purchases, that is their function, that's what they're there for.
Negotiating contracts, I don't have, I don't have any issue with that, I don't have any issue with them doing their, but I do believe that the recommendation from the official or department head as to what their needs are, because the auditing department may not know what that department needs.
So, based on this.
Yes.
I, I think this policy. We've seen it for the first time. It should be the work, in my humble opinion. So that, because we're really dissecting things that are potential and important. If we, we're being in it for a while, we'll continue because, I mean.
I believe that the only question at this point is clarification on this item. Now, you all represented this policy at the last meeting. Therefore, we wanted to make sure that the auditing department had sufficient time, that all of you all as commissioners had sufficient time to proceed with moving forward. I just think that if we need to move forward with the policy and we need to clarify that, then we should, we should, we.
We're still, I mean, in the meeting, we're really adjusting, like I said, these things the way we should, but it just ain't, you know, in this meeting.
Well, that's why I'd like to get the clarification on, as what they need here, right here. It's one thing.
But I think that if we move forward in the future, two weeks from now, I think we're gonna be back over here discussing again, changing it.
I don't know if we added the justification on the purchase orders, that it needs to be on there.
Where?
Um, I forgot what section we were gonna have the justification.
Okay.
Yeah, because our auditors requested that.
That's right, we can do that, you wanted it in section G, specification of the purchase.
So if we can have this clarification maybe on who would be making the negotiation from purchasing, how we can, is it all three? It would be purchasing, or it will be up to, uh, the department head?
In my personal, and the way that this is, that this, the way that that should be, you know, stated, is that this is, uh, purchasing will negotiate contracts or any terms based upon the recommendation of the official or department.
Whether we submit it, that it states here.
Because you all are the ones that are doing the work, it's the departments. Like I said, if you go back to, to right now, right now, the purchasing department doesn't exist. We have, you know, it's, it's the auditing department. Y'all are doing what you can with what you have, but it's not to that same level of what, you know, that's gonna go out there and handle it.
We don't have the authority that a purchasing, an appointed purchasing agent would have.
Correct.
Which makes things which are both returns.
Add a just, providing justification for the purpose in the requisition. So that'd be subsection H under two point two, your statement of purchasing policy.
And then under, on page sixteen, on invoices, just make sure that they sign for it, they submit a signed invoice.
And then it, it doesn't state the, the agreement that, that the, that I, we have to sign on our reason, the work is started, we need to leave the contract.
Oh, you were gonna add those for I T and for construction and.
It doesn't show that.
A what?
So, we signed the P O, we did all the work. You signed it, it got processed, they started on the work, and then during the meeting that we had that day, we said we needed a contract, an agreement of the scope of work signed. So, we had to stop the project, we emailed him, he prepared the contract, the agreement, it's not a contract, the agreement, got it signed by the auditor, revised by him, signed by me, and then it's, now it needs your signature. So, I don't see that here.
Cause like, let's say, those, those final contracts, obviously still, they're, court is the only one that can actually get in, uh, enter into a contract.
Will the court authorize you to sign contracts under fifty, so this would go up to that, it's still, it's still the same thing, it still has to go through legal review process. But it's, it's, that's a contract authorized by law. So it would still be there, I mean, they, it's, it, it still has to go through legal review, and it should be covered in a separate section.
And if.
Yes.
If I remember correctly, Mr. Groves, you said you were gonna do a standard contract for all contractors, for all work, so it wouldn't, we wouldn't waste any time.
And that's the one we used, we used, I used the one that he had prepared for Europe.
And I, I have sent them some standard contracts, they have some, I've sent some to Pablo, he's seen it too. Again, it just, if there's construction con, it, it, it will vary, some, some language will have to be added if there's construction because of the new state law requirements, but for other goods and services and purchases, it's pretty much a standard agreement that y'all can use for every single contract.
Are we having a meeting next week?
We may have to.
Are we pushing to next week? I don't think we're gonna get.
Um, I think that, you know, it's, you keep, they, you keep, uh, send me all your, your concerns, Gloria, please.
I did send them.
All right.
I know we were.
Did you send them over to us, so that way we can go ahead and review them, and at least the court can see your concerns, and then we can go ahead and go from there?
And, and may I just?
Yes.
Where it says purchase order sent to purchasing should be completed when they have reasonable amount of time, I would like to put an actual time.
The auditor's office has whatever time, it's, it's a reasonable time to.
I would say reasonable.
Yeah, reasonable.
We'll be talking tomorrow.
Yes, sir. We were supposed to talk earlier today.
We'll visit on this issue and we'll finalize, but I think that it was good dialogue that needed to be, needed to happen on this one. All right, so with that, what we'll do is, we'll go ahead and finalize, uh, this, uh, policy, um, if we can, pretty much call, we'll see if we can have a meeting next week, uh, but we'll, we'll work that out and we'll be in contact with you, okay? No action at this time. Moving forward to executive session. Well, we have a discussion and appropriate action to approve fiscal year twenty-five budget amendments. Budget amendments have been provided for your review for fiscal year twenty-five, it's my understanding that there still are amendments that need to be presented for the fiscal year twenty-five?
We're still working, we're still receiving invoices from various departments, so we're still working on trying to close out our fiscal year twenty-five. So you will, if, I don't know, utility, we got caught up on all those. So you'll still be getting a few budget amendments, so we close out the year properly.
Perfect. Is there a motion to approve? Motion's been made by Commissioner Rios, is her second. Second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion, being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. I'll just call to open items thirty-five through thirty-eight. Is there a motion to open those items? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is her second. Second by Commissioner Morales, discussion, being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Items have now been opened, item thirty-five, discussion and appropriate action to approve fiscal year twenty-six budget amendments. budget amendments. Budget amendments have been provided for your review as well, are there any questions? Not, is there a motion? Motion's been made by Commissioner Ramos, is her second. Second by Commissioner Rios, discussion, being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number thirty-six, discussion and appropriate action to ratify the time-sensitive payments released by county treasurer and auditor.
I don't have any.
There's nothing, being that there are none, there's no action that's required on this item. Item number thirty-seven, accounts payable. Believe that you, uh, there were some additional ones that were sent over?
Yes, um, the, these two years that you were handed were due to budget amendments, if the budget amendments did not get approved, then we can't process these payments. So because budget amendments got approved, we're requesting your authorization to pay these.
Very well. And I also do believe that there's, there was the request in order for the South Texas Food Bank processing of the, uh, payment for the, um, nonprofit that we had, that we have the P O for. Is there a way for us to place that in for its consideration pending your review? It's the, the amount that needs to get that moving with the process?
It's budgeted.
Yes, it's budgeted. Okay. Um, so for that purpose, then, if the court will take into consideration, uh, the amendments or the P Os, do these have to be specifically read out for the minutes? Okay. Uh, for the P Os on, uh, purchase orders, uh, P O number two-five-two-nine-eight-three, uh, name JP and Constables Association, uh, invoice, uh, amount two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. P O number two-five-two-nine-eight-four, JP and Constables Association, invoice amount two-fifty. P O number two-five-two-nine-eight-five, vendor name JP and Constables Association, invoice P O number two-five-two-nine-seven-eight, Isla Grand Resort, invoice number two-four-zero-five-seven-one-three, amount six-twenty-two-point-four-eight. P O number two-five-two-nine-seven-nine, name Isla Grand Resort, also invoice number two-four-zero-five-seven-one-six, amount six-twenty-two-point-four-eight. P O number two-five-two-nine-eight-zero, uh, vendor, uh, name Gabriel Serrano, uh, invoice a number, uh, travel eleven-twenty-five-seven-fourty-three-point-sixty. P O number two-five-two-nine-eight-one, vendor number three-nine-seven-three, Joe M. Biati, travel eleven-twenty-five-seven-fourty-three-point-sixty. P O number two-five-two-nine-eight-two, vendor number nine-five-seven-five, Stephanie Guigueres, travel eleven-twenty-five-two-thirty-six. As well as incorporating into, uh, the amount of the, um, contracted requirements with the South Texas Food Bank, um, nonprofit organization, the International Good Neighbor Council, uh, for the food distribution for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, uh, and the requirements as required by having a nonprofit, certified nonprofit, uh, to proceed with, uh, the amount of fifty-two thousand one hundred. Is there a motion to proceed, uh, those, uh, with those adjustments or add additions to the accounts payable? Motion's been made by Commissioner Rios, is her second. Second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a question on accounts payable October thirtieth. We have to... Sanchez and Wilson law firm, ninety-three thousand two-hundred-seventy-one?
Yes, that's for the juvenile, um, lawsuit that, that happened with the court system years ago, that ver- barely just got finalized.
He's repending for the last two years, I believe, or more. And it was an ongoing case that they handled when, um, uh, Commissioner's court changed legal counsel from Wilson to Mr. Dacheta, Mr. Dacheta did not take that one case, so we continued to pay Sanchez Wilson. So that, that was that outstanding invoice.
Well, Sanchez and Wilson was handling that case...
Yes.
Already.
Mm-hmm.
So it was...
Yeah, it just didn't get transferred.
It just didn't get transferred. That is coming out, that is coming out of the juvenile department.
The funding was provided by the, this amount specifically is being covered from the juvenile department. So it's...
And just as, the, the, it's, that it's made aware, um, as I sit on the juvenile board, uh, this is obviously an issue that, uh, for purposes of understanding that, uh, it had been discussed in the past, that the prior county judge, uh, had committed to paying the entire bill when it is Maverick, Dimmitt, and Zavala County. Uh, this is an issue that I had major issues with, uh, for this purpose and for this lawsuit, and I just inform the court, uh, that there was never a court order that was issued, uh, for that to actually take place, uh, therefore, this, uh, payment was done in the final, uh, processes of, uh, of that, um, legal issue that arose. So just as the court is, needs to be made aware of that action of your prior administration. Anything further? Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Motion's been made, and second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. All right, um, item number, warrants pending, thirty-eight. Questions? Being that there is none, is there a motion? Motion's been made by Commissioner Reese, is her second, second by Commissioner Ramos, discussion, being that there is none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Items have been approved. Item number thirty-nine, uh, executive session, um, Commissioner's court will move into executive session under section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney, they'll be taking items number one, firing EMS contracts. Item number two, install meter, apply fire hydrant and climado. Item number thirty-two, discussion and appropriate action regarding drainage water issue on lot twenty-two, two Lavis, the subdivision unit one. Item number thirty-three, discussion and appropriate action of consideration and possible approval of the budget adjustment amendment to fund district court budget cuts, and I believe that was the only other item that was requested, correct? Executive session, let the record reflect that the court will move into executive session on Thursday, October thirtieth, at six-thirty-two P M. Could you provide these to the auditors, please? And commissioners, if we can just grab a quick photo with, right here.